We are live, we are live.
Alrighty, good morning and welcome to the Village Board meeting of January 7th. And Happy New Year everyone, it's our first meeting of the year and if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll go from there. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic from which it stands, my nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, thank you. And our first presentation will be from Hugh, morning Hugh.
Good morning, everyone, we all have questions. From last time, I just wanted to mention two other things, trustee Melendez asked me, when was the first Christmas Santa Claus parade? In East Hampton Village and we found out it was in October of 1951. When the Chamber of Commerce decided to have a Santa Claus parade. And do you know how Santa Claus came? He landed on the village green in an airplane. And then came down the street in the airplane apparently waving to everybody and then he got to the Edwards Theater where he gave out candies. Okay, and the other question was that trustee Graham asked me about Doonmere Lane. And I found in the town records that in 1904, the town hired the New Jersey Bridge Company to build bridges over Hunting Lane. On Hunting Lane, on Doonmere Lane and in Springs. And the one in Springs, I think was over Pussy's Pond and Akabonic Creek, you know, there was a wooden bridge there. So now did Hunting Lane and Doonmere Lane end where the bridge started, I still don't know, alright?
I think they did Hugh, I've seen a map that shows going down about that far, maybe a little bit less.
Right, okay, okay, now we have questions, I gave everybody questions. Let's always start with trustee Brown.
You asked me about Mrs Epstein.
Yeah.
And she had a clothing store on Main Street, 75 Main Street. And apparently she was quite legendary because she, the store was filled with boxes and merchandise, boxes, you know stacked to the ceiling apparently. It was quite in disarray, however, you'd be able to walk into the store and she'd be able to size you up and know exactly what you needed and be able to put her finger on it very quickly. And everyone seemed to adore her and, and the store did very, very well.
No, where did you find that information?
From our family historian, my father-in-law.
I know, I figured you could go to either your, either your parents or your in-laws to get that one. And Mrs Epstein was also robbed twice.
Yes, because she walked to work to and from every day from Cheryl Road.
Yes. Mayor Larson, you and I talked about Edward C. Morford?
Yes, but first let me, let me clear up, you had asked a question and I knew the answer right off at the last meeting, so then you called me and gave me another question. So years ago, when I was chief, we actually tracked down all of the previous chiefs of police. And you've given me Edward Morford, who was the first police chief in the village to do some research on. So it's just, every time I do this, it's just gets more and more fascinating when you go back into the history of things. But so Edward Morford was actually one of the first police officers in the township. In 1909, he came from Redbanks, New Jersey and he was the first night watchman in the, in the town of East Hampton. Because you know, obviously the village hadn't incorporated yet, not until 1925, I mean 1920. So in 1909, he becomes the first police officer in East Hampton to work nights. Very interesting, December of 9, December 3rd of 1915. He's involved in a actual shootout on Newtown Lane and winds up arresting the subject after he shoots him. It was amazing, and then later that subject, he was indicted by the County District Attorney's Office.
Wow.
Yeah, very interesting, he retires, he becomes the first police chief in 1920 and then retires. After serving 17 years of a combined service between the town and the village in 1925. He then became the owner of East End Hardware. And then he went into business with E.T. Dayton in 1929 and actually was one of the people who developed Dayton Lane and all the properties that went between Dayton Lane. Went between Main Street and Church Street on Dayton Lane. And unfortunately, he passed in 1931 suddenly of a heart attack.
Yeah, great, right.
Very interesting stuff, we still can't find a picture of him though, so we really need a picture.
One of the places, you know, board members, you can find information is you go to the East Hampton Star Archive on the library's website. And then you type in Edward C. Morford and it'll give you all the articles that has, have his name in it. And I found a picture of, he had a crash, he crashed his car, he had this, and there was a picture of the crash and I thought we had Edward C. Morford, but no, he didn't, no, he didn't.
Just his car.
Yeah, just the car, okay, trustee Menardi.
Hi, good morning, so you asked me about the reasoning behind Main Street in East Hampton Village being so wide? Or the explanation for its width? And the best I could come up with would be to accommodate horses and buggies. And so I guess the question for me, I thought was fairly straightforward, but am I right?
Well, that's part of the answer, you're right, but the other answer is every spring, they used to send all the cattle, sheep and horses. From the surrounding area down to Montauk for the summer to pasture and then they bring them back in the fall. So I think that's the other reason why the street is so wide.
I thought they started foreseeing the future for our diagonal parking maybe.
Alright, thank you, trustee Graham?
Sir. My question was about the prolific village photographer who was also a police chief. And if walking around the emergency services building is any, any guide, it was Chief Fritz Leddy. And I actually have a story about Chief Leddy. My wife's great uncle, I guess, her grandfather's cousin, a man named Dr. Shepherd Kreck. Who owned what is now Chris Little's House on Georgia Capone. Was very fond of duck hunting and would set up a blind on his property in the village where he could hunt. And being that hunting was not legal in the village at that, at that time, he would always invite Chief Leddy to come shoot with him.
Well, I don't think we have an image of, you know, all those pictures in the emergency services building, right, they're all Fritz's, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there was a beautiful exhibit at Guild Hall when they first came out, Doug Coons put that together. Okay, and trustee Melendez?
Yes, good morning, how are you?
There you are.
I had, my question was about three restaurants from the King's family. So I found out that Donald had Marmador in Newtown where Golden Pear is. Speedy had the village restaurant and Rem's and Florence King had Rem's and Mills.
That's right.
Yep.
You got them now, let's find out where they were.
I know that the Marmador was where Golden Pear is.
That was one Marmador, the first Marmador was where the movie theater was. And the movie theater burned down and so did the Marmador, so you're right, then they moved it over to where the Golden Pear is, okay?
I think I had it, I just can't open my phone. So I'm not sure where they were, I know Newtown Lane, I think that's where they were.
Okay, well, Rem and Mills was where Second Nature. The Second Nature place is, what is it now, that famous historic landmark, Cootenelli? But that's where Rem and Mills Restaurant was and then Speed's Restaurant. If you're looking, if you're on Newtown Lane and the first store after the corner store of Ellie Tahari is Avion or, I can't pronounce it, A-V-E-O-N. That's where the restaurant was, Speed's Restaurant. Good, you got them.
Yeah, I have to thank my lifeline, Lisa Larson, she gave me all these answers.
Well, yeah, you're at a disadvantage if you haven't lived here for a long time.
Exactly.
You're doing great.
Thank you.
Okay, now next time, everybody, you get to ask me a question, okay?
Alright.
That's it.
So let's, hey, I think the police chief could add a little more about Fritz.
There's, there are some stories that are out there that are pretty comical, a long list of them and I, Fritz was my, my wife's. Great grandfather. And Elaine Fritz's daughter lives, lives with us, so we get updates periodically of different stories that took place. One story that was out there for quite a while and I think, I think it ended up being true, was Fritz used to give driver's licenses out. And would write a note to somebody in need of a driver's license. Which kind of indicates the size of the town at that, at that point and the size of the village at that point. But yeah, there are a lot of funny stories and anecdotes, he was chief for quite a long time, quite a long time.
Thank you, Mike, that's a good point.
Is that it Hugh?
That's it, unless you want to talk about.
Alright, so now we're gonna go to Christopher Clapp and Kevin McDonald to give us a little presentation from the Nature Conservancy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I believe Sarah Davison is on the line to join us.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
If Sarah, while I pull up my presentation here, if Sarah wants to say a couple of words, go ahead and jump on in, Sarah.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and thank you Mayor and Village Board for having us today. Water quality is of key importance to us in the village, Hook Pond, Georgia Capone and our precious drinking water. And today's presentation is in direct response to questions and issues that the mayor has risen. And it's an attempt to address insufficiencies in the current law and to accelerate the process of upgrading to the low nitrogen septic system. So take it away, Chris.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, thank you folks and I'll just, I'll just jump right on in after that great introduction. So we know, we know we have a problem, we know we have a problem with excess nitrogen. And among other things, leaching from systems that were never designed in the first place to remove these sorts of contaminants. The, the main objective of installing a cesspool or even a conventional septic system. Was to dispose of our wastewater as quickly and as far away from the ground surface as possible. Unfortunately, what the outcome of that has been is that the wastewater doesn't get treated before it enters either our groundwater or our surface waters. And the groundwater eventually does lead to our surface waters as, as most of us know. So I have the numbers here from Suffolk County, so roughly 75% of the county is, is on onsite sanitary systems, it's about 360,000 homes. Within the village, I believe it's 100% of the village, there is no, you know, large scale collection system within the village. So it's about 100% of the homes or the 1,600 or so housing units. I didn't, I wasn't able to get the exact numbers and I wasn't able to actually get the numbers for how many installed IA systems yet, but we could, we could work through that all as, as a, as we begin to work together on this project. So the nice thing about this problem is there's a solution, right? So not every problem has a solution these days and we know what to do. So there, there is a modern technology that can be employed, that has been employed around the country and around the world for decades. Relatively new here in the last decade in Suffolk County. And to help homeowners who didn't create this problem themselves. Is that we've, there's funding streams available, which is a good thing. So not only do we have a solution, but we also have financial tools to help people be part of that solution. And so the next steps here, which the village has already begun to take. Is to create some legislation and policies that move us towards those solutions a little bit quicker. So what we're recommending for discussion or to begin a discussion around today is to require, you know, amend the existing local law. That requires sanitary systems upon a building permit with, that meets certain parameters. But also to begin to expand that universe of, of requirements to failures of existing systems. Or any other replacement that might be occurring on a property. So we don't want to see people, you know, replacing a conventional system that doesn't treat for these contaminants. With something in kind when we know that there's ability to do something better. Include commercial properties that are not, that won't be included in any proposed sewer areas upon site plan review or failure. This is, there's town funds available for that as well through the CPF program. And then begin the conversation around property transfer with some sort of grace period for people to comply. This last one here, property transfer, it's been talked about around the country, particularly up and down the east coast for some time. Many municipalities have come very close to passing a property transfer requirement. And you know, they just haven't figured out the mechanisms to do so. So I think these are three good starting points to see how we could begin to advance these new technologies. A little bit more rapidly within the village so that we could see those improvements, you know, within our lifetimes or hopefully even sooner. And then of course, homes that already have an Article 19 compliance system would be exempt from these rules because that's what you're asking them to do. You're not gonna ask them to do, redo what they already did, right? So people that have already done this would be exempt from these, these new requirements. And, and the why now is there's no outright cost to the village, this is not coming out of your, your current budget or future budget. There is likely no cost or little cost to the homeowners. With the amount of funding that's currently available through state, county and town funds. Depending on what tax bracket you're in and what type of system you're installing. And what situation you're in, there, there could be upwards of $50,000 of incentive funds available to you. Through those programs. The requirement could also request homeowners to upgrade in good faith. And then, you know, we could talk about what to do if, if there's failure to comply. You know, we don't, we don't have, you know, this is the beginning of a conversation around some of these ideas. And we appreciate you welcoming us in to begin this conversation, Kevin, do you want to wrap up with that?
Thank you, so again, to the mayor and the rest of the trustees, we thank you for the opportunity. Sarah and friends of Georgia Capone and we at the Nature Conservancy have been working on water quality for a while. Chris and I have been dealing with this issue in Suffolk County and Houston, Long Island for the last decade or so. And just to reiterate, so this is a global problem, too much nitrogen in the environment and in water, it's a national problem. It's a, a problem up and down the east coast and the Chesapeake Bay and New England and here. And, and in the, in the, in the most local of all descriptions, it's a village problem. And the solution all requires that we all do something a little differently and better. And we've had a few preliminary conversations with friends of Georgia Capone and, and Village Administrator about what could some early steps be? That would be appropriate, that would be meaningful, that would be relatively easy and strategic. And the two principal recommendations are amend your law to require replacement on failure, just like is done in the town of East Hampton. And the second piece is a conversation that has been had in a number of other villages and towns. About the requirement to replace on transfer, and let's clarify what we think that means because that can be misunderstood. It doesn't mean that. Before you sell your house, it has to be, there has to be an upgrade. What it means is the transfer itself is a triggering mechanism within some period of time where an upgrade should occur. And that the upgrade can happen, let's say, within a year to 18 months after the transfer. And that reflects and respects that sometimes a homeowner might want to make improvements to the property. And that they may need the time to think about where they would want to have their upgrade and how it would happen. And there would be nothing imagined in any of this that would preclude anybody from seeking available grants that exist already. And that frankly, Chris and I and Sarah and others have worked to actually create. So the ballot measures that were approved in 2016 to allow this new water quality funding to even exist. Is the byproduct of our work and that of Assemblyman Thiel and Ken Laval at the time. So I, we do agree that this is the beginning of a conversation. It's really important that this be done right and that it be done effectively and that it be, that the beginning of it be smoothly administered. Because there's nothing worse than a wonderful idea started in haste that blew up. And I've been on the side of the blow up side, it's really ugly and I've been on the side of the ones that have, have gone into smooth implementation. It's much better being on the smooth implementation side. And if I could be so bold and forward. I think it's a really good idea, I had some preliminary conversations with Fred Thiel about this and most of you know, Fred is, you know, he has, he was a town attorney, a village attorney, a planning board attorney. And we just want to be really sure that this is tight and clean. And I asked him if he would be available for, for a longer consultation with the village and your extremely talented planning and legal staff. To make sure that we get this as good as it can be. Because if we do it right, it's very likely that other villages and towns who've been talking about doing this would copy it. So you guys are the first ones moving on this if you wish to and we want to be as helpful as we can in that regard. So I'm happy to take some questions if you have any and look forward to, you know, following up with you about how we can all move forward in this direction.
Kevin?
Yes.
It's Tiger Graham, I know that when we discussed the, the current law about upgrades to the IAs. We discussed replacement on failure at that point.
Yep.
And the reason we didn't add it then is because the engineering studies that the county required. Would indicate that perhaps there might be a failing system failing for a longer period of time than anyone wanted. Has that problem been addressed and solved by the county?
Yeah, I'm actually, Tiger, good to see you, Happy New Year and, and I do remember testifying at the village hearing where this conversation came up and I'm having the flashback to it as, as you raised that. And the other issue that came up by, you know, at the time, other village trustees, which were great questions. Was that there was a concern that, you know, most people are in a, in a crisis when the septic system fails on their property for a lot of reasons that are obvious. Especially when we're all homebound under, under COVID related conditions, right? So the county has found, and this is actually found across the country, that people who are, I mean, I've had two extra people living in my house since last March. And, and my system failed. It's 35 years old and this is not a phenomenon unique to Suffolk County, this is happening all across the country. So people whose systems were close to failing and might have lasted another year or two, they're accelerating their failure. So the county now has a new procedure where you can get an emergency permit. The county will send out an engineer that day when you call with a consultant. And you can get a grant expedited and a permit issued in a matter of days. So oddly enough, they're taking the grant program and directing it to these emergency conditions. So the county is very nimble on this and, and to the question directly, I think if we had a working meeting after this meeting. And invited some of the county people in to have a discussion, to answer all these legitimate like questions. About what's the procedure, how would it work, how come, what's, what's the villagers' role in this, how can we help integrate this? I think it's a really good idea, but they get it, they understand it, they're responding to the sort of more global problem. And 50% of their grants that they have made in around the last nine months have been toward failures. Failures that have accelerated in many cases because of more people being home, working from home and things like that.
I think it's, it's worth noting that that failure program evolved at the county level. Out of the requirement of East Hampton Town to no longer allow conventional systems to be installed. So people were saying, if I can't install, replace my cesspool in kind anymore, I can't install a conventional system anymore. How am I gonna get out of this failure situation? So they, you know, that, the, that nudge by East Hampton Town to no longer allow conventional system installs within the town. Move the county to create this program, which you could now also take advantage of.
Yep, and, and bringing Melissa to that, to that same discussion because she, she administers this on behalf of the town, I think that would be just a natural asset value for that discussion, but good question.
Yeah, I have another question too, and that is, I was speaking with one of my fellow trustees yesterday. And we were talking about perhaps even. Making it a little more required to, if you file for any kind of a permit on your property. If you are in a sensitive area, like the people that live along Georgia Capone, along the north side of Hook Pond. In these sensitive watershed areas that we would think that maybe almost any kind of a permit would trigger the need for an upgrade.
Yep.
And the only problem with that is that I am under the impression. That for example, if I wanted to do an upgrade here at my house, since I'm a public official, I would not be eligible for any of the funds. Not, not that I live next to a pond.
Right, that was in the county's grant program at the beginning, that has since, I think, been stricken, but we can check that.
Okay.
And on the theory that nitrogen is nitrogen, no matter who it comes from.
Right, and I think that we have many sensitive areas in the village, Egypt Lane for one.
Yep.
I mean, every one of those septic systems is sitting in the groundwater, I think we need to move on that. And if. Many of the people who live on Egypt Lane can probably afford it, no problem. But I don't think that's the metric under which we operate. And I think that we should really find ways to encourage these people without being punitive to do upgrades. And you know, I think that I for one would be willing to. Move forward on something like this, I think that Sarah has been before us many times, you know, in meetings and in individual meetings. And I think that most of us totally understand that if we don't take care of our ponds. And our water quality, we may not have a resort community much longer. And you know, again, not that we need to be worried about being a resort, but I think that, you know, we need to. You know, we need to protect what brings people here.
Agreed.
Rant rant over.
Yep, agreed. Well, happy happy to work on all those ideas and things related to it.
Kevin.
I'm also in support of anything that we can do to improve our water quality. When we first, as you know, when we first adopted um. This IA requirement um here in the village, we were one of the first villages to do so in South County.
Yep.
Um and at the time, there was no um for failing systems, as you mentioned, there was no expedited review. So. If that is in place now, um yeah, I would be complete uh supportive of that. And I think we all realize that, you know, much of Georgia Capone's shoreline is within the village. Uh seventy percent, I think, pond as well. So. How we implement it, you know, as far as the transfer and so forth, that's feasible and able to be enforced. Um is, you know, further discussion, you know, needs to be had for sure. But I'm open to the concept um a hundred and ten percent as well.
Wonderful.
Hey Kevin, I have um just a couple of comments. So uh I'm very much in favor of. Implementing all of your right, all of these ideas. And I've also been in contact with Sarah several times now. About the idea of implementing on the transfer of a property, but. We had talked about the two-year travel time, identifying that area as the most crucial.
Right.
And targeting that first. Is that something that we can identify very easily and?
Well, I mean, I I mean, you we 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 should go through the drill since you asked the question. But um you know, you you could also have your administrators. You know, splitting their hair in their head, trying to see who's on one side of the street or the other side of the street. In the two-year time of travel or the two-year and two-month time of travel. I mean, you could drive yourself crazy. There's the two-year time of travel. I mean, you. You could start there. You could you could do a more aggressive outreach there and let people know that this is the program they should be participating in. But, you know, uh ease of administration is really important. And in the town of East Hampton, if your system fails. You can't put it an old one in. And most people are going, well, gee, if I had to put a failed system and it costs me eight to ten grand. Or I can get a grant to put in a new system and it doesn't pollute anymore. This isn't a hard calculation, right?
No, I'm not. I'm not talking about the failed systems. I'm talking about.
On the transfer. Okay.
On the transfers, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh you know, most of the village is in the watershed. So I mean.
Well, that's that's sort of the other reason, you know, this. We should we should go through the drill and we should look for uh, you know, what's the what's the difference between? Zero to two, two to five.
Right.
But I think before it's all over, before you. A lot of the village is in somebody's watershed. So, you know, doing the whole thing at once, probably not a bad idea.
It it all gets there eventually.
Yeah, no, that's 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 fair. And I I really, I really would like to do that. I think that's the way to go. The other thing, I recently um contacted Fred Thiel because. As you know, the CPF only provides twenty percent. For water quality over the entire township. The problem is that the village itself generates a lot of this CPF funds.
Right.
However, we don't really have a lot of open space to be buying, and yet half of the village at least is in the watershed. So for us to increase that twenty percent would be huge for us to be able to use more money. For the um for water quality. So he he agreed and he said it's not the first request he's had for that. Southampton Village was similar. And, you know, we're also in the middle of, we're in the starting phase of the centralized sewer system for the business core. Which again is in the watershed. So that would go a long way in helping the quality of Hook Pond. And therefore, the CPF money, in my opinion, should be allowed to be used for the septic system. So that's another, you know, a prong of this this whole task.
Yeah, I could I could tell you, Mr. Mayor, as as a as chair of the committee that oversees the applications for funds for that twenty percent. That doesn't go towards the rebate program. Um there is a track for those types of projects. So um you know. Get get those get those projects together uh and get real real funding requests together. And um you know, I'm pretty sure the committee would love to entertain. Uh you know, a request from a municipality to uh upgrade upgrade its downtown business districts. To in a in a way that enables both uh economic development as well as improving water quality, but.
That's perfect, Chris. That's.
To be improving water quality.
That's exactly what we want to we wanted to hear.
If if I can make one other suggestion, um since you sort of initiated the the broader concept than just the initial. Reason we thought we were coming on. So. So there's, as I see it, this is a conversation again that uh Chris and I had with uh your your administrator, village administrator. The first of all, we really appreciate the importance that water quality. Appears to be resonating with all of you. This is wonderful. I have to tell you. That there there are some villages and towns that are a bit more forward leaning and a bit more. Responsive to this concern than others. And there are there are people in the world who still don't have a smartphone. And there are people that went out and got the first smartphone, right? So you decide which one you are. Um and. The the strategy of thinking about where you need, you know, your. Maybe more collected sewer waste management around your central business district, perhaps. Where you should have your your a really aggressive outreach for. Uh advanced treatment system replacement like Egypt Lane and others, which we we can work with friends of Georgia Capone and. And the Hook Pond folks on are going forward. Um and where you want to do your, you know, road drainage improvement issues around Georgia and Hook Pond. That's a lot of that's a lot of capital money.
Right.
That has to be planned for obligated and executed. And there's a story that I always tell because my hair color is the right color. Um there was this really nice mayor in the village of Quogue. Her name was Thelma Jurgensen. Thelma looked like. Everybody's favorite grandmother, right? Just a very pleasant, thoughtful, soft-spoken woman. Uh but she was an evil genius at municipal uh uh work. She could get everything done she wanted to, and she was one of the best process managers I had ever met. So she created a plan in nineteen ninety-nine when the CPF first passed in nineteen ninety-eight. And all she said was. She had a plan for twelve priority parcels in the village. And she said, I want these acquired. And she gave the plan to the town of Southampton. And she gave the plan to the county and she gave the plan to the state and said, these are the villagers' priorities. And every year she picked one. And she said, I want to do this one this year. And then she talked to the county, the state and the town, and somebody decided who was going to get it. The village of East Quogue. Got every parcel of land they wanted acquired, acquired. Why? They had a plan. They executed their plan. They followed their strategy that was good, and they made adjustments when they had to. If you did the same thing. With every one of your water priorities that that you just discussed. You would be following the successful model of Thelma Jurgensen.
I'm sure you saw on um, I saw an article last night about West Hampton Village that they also acquired CPF funding to finish off their. Centralized sewer system. So that was encouraging as well. So, yeah, well, I think all of us are on track to um to get this done. I think we. Would enjoy being the leader of this, and I think it's really important that we get it done because if we don't start now. You know, we can't, we can't fix the problem. So.
Understood.
I think we're all in.
So who do you want us to torment going forward to follow up on this? Marcos, okay, Marcos. Sorry, man.
Actually, actually, Kevin, I just got to tell you, you did say we do have a fantastic planner and we do. His name's Billy Hayjack, as you know.
Yeah.
And he's on the line right now. Um and I know he's got a plan in a sense. He's got. You know, a a vision in terms of what the the village should be going after.
Great.
So that'll be communicated to the board as well.
We're happy to work with you and Billy and and Elizabeth Baldwin and anybody else. And Chris and I and Sarah have done this a few times in different places. So. We we think we can actually bring a modest talent uh uh to this as well. And we look forward to working with you going forward.
That's great, Kevin. Thanks so much, but I I really would like to see this get, you know, get fast-tracked as quickly as we can. So maybe before summer, we could have this in place?
I I you could do the local laws, I think, before summer. And then we could and it's all about how much sleep Billy doesn't get. You could probably have your plan done. Um uh that has those three main elements probably by summer as well. Billy doesn't have his picture up, so I don't know what sort of pain look he has, but um, you know, it's good to do. Oh, there he is. Sorry, man.
Kevin, I'm smiling. It's okay.
Okay.
All right, great.
I could say with uh, you know, having worked with Billy for, you know, quite a bit for almost the last decade or so. Uh I have full faith that we could pull something off for you. In some short period of time.
Good. And and so well, Marcos is our main point of contact. We'll follow with uh Beth on the local laws and Billy on the plan.
That's great. That's great.
I think this has, yeah, I I think this has a lot of support across the board.
Wonderful.
I don't see um, I don't see this falling down anywhere. The mayor has made this a point. And uh we're going to follow this.
This is awesome. What a way to start January, considering the way it has started, all things considered. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Chris and Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah.
Marcos, talk to you soon.
So I'm going to just jump here for a second before we get into the work session. Is there any public comments, anybody on the line? Before we get into any of these discussions?
Currently, there's nobody on the line.
All right, great. Uh I just have a couple of announcements I want to go over before we get into our work session. And one is Hugh, are you still there? So Hugh and I have um come up with a historical scavenger hunt. It's kind of a COVID-friendly uh family. Game that we'd like to play. Um and it's scheduled for January twenty-third. At twelve noon, basically, we're Hugh is going to give out nine clues via email. Um each clue, you have to find the answer to the first clue before you can get the second clue. It should be a lot of fun that day. If you want to join or you want more information, just go to our Facebook page and you can uh. You can obtain the the information there. Or you can email us at uh historic E H V at gmail dot com. Or call June Lester. At Village Hall and she'll fill you in. All right, uh next thing I wanted to talk about was COVID. Uh Chief, are you on? Chief Tracy?
Uh yes, sir.
Give us an update on the how the county's doing and also about the vaccine, if you would.
Um sure. As many people know, the uh state is in vaccination phase one A, uh they call. Um and that is the hospital workers, uh EMS workers, uh EMTs, ambulance uh staffs. And um that group was recently uh on the fourth of January, it was updated to include. Uh private doctors, dentists, uh pharmacists, uh home care workers, hospital, hospice workers, et cetera. Um and we spoke with Robert Ross from Southampton Hospital yesterday. And as well as the town supervisor, Vance Goyack, yesterday about plans uh to distribute the vaccine. On a local level when we go to the next phase, which we call one B. And uh I know the town, as you may have read in the paper, the town is looking to use one of its facilities uh to perform that function. And I know local pharmacies are going to be a plan to be involved with the distribution as well. The next phase, we are not sure exactly when it's going to start. We've been told. That it's possible the next phase of vaccinations will be towards the end of January, but they're not uh holding firm to that. That's going to include um firemen, police officers, other public safety workers, teachers, educators and so forth. People over seventy-five and then also people that have uh pre-existing conditions which would make them more vulnerable. So. And then beyond that, it would be rolled out to the general population. So uh there seems to be a pretty good plan in place, although the information. Uh from the state to uh local municipalities has been um. Unimpressive, let's put it that way. The state has a wonderful website, though. Um WWW health dot NY dot gov. And it's got a tremendous amount of information. It it has not changed a lot, the uh the website. Although some of the the messaging coming out of the health department has periodically changed. So. That's a good um website for the public to go to for additional information. They also have on that website a little uh box you can click. To see if you actually fall into uh one of these categories. You can check it right online yourself. So. That's pretty innovative and pretty good, pretty good thing. On the local level. Um as people may have read also, the town has set up a a testing center at Town Hall. It um you have to. Get in line and go and so forth and so on. Um as we found out yesterday. But um it seems to be working very well. And the there's also a um. Testing center at East Hampton High School on Tuesdays and Thursdays that's available to the public. So the testing seems to be moving. Um pretty well. And um. As far as hospitalizations, I'll I'll just bring that up up to speed on that. Robert Ross from the hospital. He briefs us each week on the number of patients. Um that are experiences COVID and the number of patients in the ICU and so forth. So. Their their numbers have been slowly increased, uh but they're not at the critical number which the state. Uh says is eighty percent, which would force us into a different shutdown phase. So so far that is. Um hopeful and um relatively good news, although the numbers overall are going up or have gone up. They're attributing that to holidays and holiday gatherings. So.
Okay.
Uh hopefully, we've turned a page and we're we're getting there slowly.
Great. Thanks, Chief. Uh the other thing I just wanted to bring up was recently The Star did an article story about Khan. You know, um in Park Place, losing his uh lease to higher rent. And we're really um really disappointed, or I'm disappointed at the landlords who are raising rents. In the middle of a pandemic and putting some of our businesses out of business. So I've asked Marcos to reach out to some of the landlords to see if we could have a meeting all together to see if we could. Try to reverse this trend before it gets out of hand. Uh it's bad enough that. Businesses are struggling because of the pandemic to stay alive, and then we have landlords that are doubling rents at the same time. So. We're hoping we can make some headway with the landlords. You know, there's no guarantees, obviously, but it is disappointing to see. Uh Khan Sports going out of business and uh Terry Wallace's gallery going out of business after a twenty-plus. Year run in both those locations. So. We are uh as a village, we are going to try to try to help. I'm not sure what we can do, but we are going to try to help. So I just want to let everybody know that. That's all I have. Um is anybody on the line yet? Uh Jody, you are not?
There are no callers on the line.
All right, great. So let's get into the uh work session discussion. Does anybody want to bring up or talk about the the bid at the Chowder Bowl? Uh we received three bids and um. I think from the two highest bids were very qualified bidders. I think their menus are very close. Uh. Does anybody have anything they want to talk about with that or not?
Um hi, everybody. Um I don't really have anything to point out, but I um I was very happy with the submissions that we received. And uh the, you know, the the high bid uh was a very encouraging uh proposal. And um if we, you know. Go forward with them, I I'm excited. I'm excited for the season of up at the beach. So um, you know, I I was happy with the submissions.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So June, let's put that on the agenda to accept the high bid.
Okeydoke.
On the fifteenth. Uh food trucks at Two Mile Hollow or any of our beaches. We've uh we put out a request. I think June put it in the newspaper and we've received about. June, what are the stats? Give us the stats on the uh.
Uh so far.
Just under twenty.
Yep, thank you. Just under.
Responses, right.
Yep, eight and eight in support and eleven opposed.
Okay. Anybody have any comments? Uh?
Yeah.
Try this?
Yeah, Mayor, I think that um reading the comments. Yeah, Mayor, I think that, um, reading the comments, um, I think that most of the negatives were in terms of trash, in terms of traffic, in terms of congestion. And I think that if we plan this properly for our trial project at Two Mile Hollow, which would be the only place that, the only beach that I would suggest we try it at, um, I would think that a, um, I think we could probably come up with ways to mitigate all of these issues, uh, especially in working with the vendor. Um, my thought would be at Two Mile Hollow to place the food truck in the northwest part of the parking lot. So that if people walk up to the food truck, they may eat their food there or on the way back to the beach. So they don't take the garbage onto the beach. Um, I, I think there are a lot of ways we could work with this. And I think it just requires good planning between the vendor and the village.
I agree. I agree with Tiger. I, I think we should try it at Two Mile Hollow Beach only, call it a pilot program, whatever you want to call it. And, um, I think we should give it a shot.
I think so too. I agree with that. As long as we speak to the vendor and get all the trash and all the traffic all squared out and put it as part of the contract. So if they don't comply, either they get fined or they lose their contract. I think that's the way to work it.
I, I think Two Mile is also a very good spot. We do have bathrooms. We have the largest parking lot at Two Mile. Um, it's a very busy beach. I would think Two Mile is probably busier than Georgica. Um, again, with extra parking and extra resources. And I agree with, with Sandra and, and Tiger where, you know, we can craft some type of language where the, um, uh, the truck has to, um, you know, help with the garbage or mitigate garbage w- with some type of, of plan. Um, but you can't, you can't assume people are going to litter. You know, I never liked taking that, that approach where some of the comments that we had from the public, which I appreciated all of them, assumed that this was going to cause traffic or garbage and things like that where, you know, maybe it's not going to cause any traffic or garbage. You know, again, you can't assume people are going to do the worst. Um, and we do have fairly clean beaches and, and we put a lot of pride into, to the garbage pickup, uh, as well. So, um, you know, I, um, I, I, I would support this idea. Um, however, a lot, when I was, a lot of people came to me, they were a little unclear of our message in the newspaper where it was one beach, one truck, uh, you know, and, and so I, I, I think that people thought that we were trying to put trucks at all the beaches or one truck at all the beaches. So I'd like to make it clear that it's one truck at one beach as a pilot program to see how this works.
Yeah, I would also, I'd also like to add, um, to Chris's point, uh, he's right. Not everybody is a pig. But in every group, there are some pigs. And I think also that the, um, food truck vendors themselves are, uh, probably better versed in where the trash goes. And what people do and how they behave around the truck. So I think that, you know, they'll probably have a lot of information for us in terms of what we're going to need to deal with.
I, I'm in support of trying it at Two Mile, um, as well. Uh, I think that we have to, uh, think about, you know, litter noise and the flow of traffic so that, you know, that's not, you know, in any way endangering people who are waiting online or walking from the food, uh, truck. Last summer, we did implement the, um, after-hours garbage pickup, you know, at the beaches, um, to help mitigate the litter on the beach and in the parking lots. I think that was really successful. Um, they also, uh, you know, drove through the commercial corn, hit the hotspots, you know, in front of Starbucks and Ciderella and so forth. So you know, just making sure that we just stay on top of any possible problem, um, will go a long way.
And Chris, to get to your point, uh, about the contract, I, I certainly think we can put that in there. The, um, the, I'd like to put this also to get a, cast a wider net on our Facebook page, the Village's Facebook page. I think we'll get a lot, a lot more responses, um, just have a better view as to how, you know, other than less than 20. Um, but in addition to just the, the lifeguards, Chris, also that kind of help in the beaches, the Mayor's Youth Council is also going to be set up. Um, just spoke to Jack Patrickoff about that, who's leading it and Maddie Brown, if I can call her Maddie, sorry. Um, you know, she, she's helping out as well. So that's, we're putting that together to address the trash issue. That seems to be the big negative in these responses. So.
Great.
All right, perfect. So we'll move to the next step on that, June.
Okey doke.
Uh, who wants to talk about Sea Spray cottages? Is that you, Sandra?
Well, yeah, um, I went to visit the Sea Spray cottages and I think there's a lot of issues and we have to, um, pay attention to what's happening there. I think it's been disregarded for a long time. That's what I thought when I went to see them. Um, there's a lot of things that have to be fixed. And there is a lot of things that tenants have done that should have never been allowed. So, um, I would say we should start with an inspection of each one of them. So we can have an idea and get, um, what's wrong. Cause just by looking at it, you know it, but I imagine cables, tubes, everything that goes under has to be in the same disrepair as the doors, the windows and everything else. So I believe that an inspection of all of them is something that we need to do now, soon.
I, I agree with Sandra. In fact, when, um, we were asked to go to the Sea Spray just to take a tour of them, I had written to, um, all of you and Marcos asking for, you know, a written assessment of each cottage. And then we can determine what needs to be done and go from there. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. When I, when I went through, when I went through the pot, the, all the cottages with Paul, uh, Rose and I went down at the same time. She didn't have time to stay and do all of them. I did. Um, there are some severe problems, uh, at Sea Spray. There are some problems that are not so severe. Uh, DPW, um, has, who is in charge of maintaining Sea Spray, has kind of limited themselves to doing roofs, um, which obviously we need to do. Um, I think that when they do a new roof, they should put on gutters. You know, things that aren't too expensive, but there are several things that are going to be very expensive. And I think that we should get a, uh, engineer and a contractor to go through each one and give us the list of what needs to be done. And then along with those professionals, we can prioritize what we have to do. Now, I think many of the, uh, tenants in the Sea Spray cottages have done bathrooms and kitchens. Uh, I think we need to get a hold of that process. And that if they want to put in a, um, a, a new kitchen, uh, you know, mother may I. You know, not, I'm going to do it and tell you about it later. Uh, also, I think that we could perhaps partner with some of the tenants in terms of the maintenance of these structures. Um, I don't know, because it's village-owned property. I don't know if that means that, uh, all the work done has to be prevailing wage. I know that if we do it, it has to be prevailing wage, but if the tenant does it, does it have to be prevailing wage? It does? Okay. Well, then, that's one, that's one idea that doesn't work.
Well, I think, why don't we have, uh, I see Fred's not on, or if he is, I don't see him. Uh, why don't, Marcos, why don't we contact Fred, have him, have, um, Drew Bennett and, uh, go through each unit and tell us what needs to be done. And then we can bid things out.
I also think, uh, we need to figure out if they're historic or not. The, the issues of the gutters and things that we can change or not change. If it's, uh, under the historic, you know, protection, we cannot put gutters or we cannot do some changes. So.
I don't think there's anything that, um, prohibits us from putting gutters, um, on them, whether they are in the his, the Ocean Avenue Historic District. You, that is, um, confirmed. I spoke with Bob Hefner. And I don't think there's anything that precludes us from, um, putting gutters on them. And in fact, that would help, uh, you know, maintain the integrity of, of the buildings and the porches and the decks, uh, surrounding them. Uh, and I also think if anyone would like to make any, um, improvements in the interior, which I'd seen done as far as renovations of some of the bathrooms, you know, the plumbing fixtures and tiling. And in some of the kitchens, I think that would be fine, but there just needs to be a process where they get approval from us in advance of doing the work. And they would have to, you know, delineate with a plan exactly what they would want to do. And it's a win-win for everyone. You know, they get to enjoy the upgrade and, um, so forth. And, and we get, uh, the benefit of, of that reno being done at their expense.
I just believe that's wrong in the sense of like, they should all be the same. And now when you go into these cottages, they all have different looks, different tiles, different floors. Um, I don't think if we are the landlords, we should be able to say, this is what we need and this is what we want. Um, there was an issue that somebody changed something in the bathroom. It was European plumbing versus American. Now it's broken. Now DPW cannot get any of the parts. So I think if, um, we're going to renovate it, it should be done by the village the right way, because we are renting, we're the landlords. And the people that come here and say like, I'm renovating, they're all going to feel like they're more owners. And they're going to want to feel like some special, something more special because they did the changes. I think that the land should be doing that, not.
I understand your point, but you know, some people do, um, rent them year after year after year. And it's a savings for us if they say, oh, I'd like to repaint, you know, the interior, uh, linen white or whatever. Um, and we don't have to, you know, pay for it ourselves, you know, as long as there's a mechanism in place that reviews the, um, potential, uh, upgrades and renovations uh, with approval possibly from Bob Hefner to make sure it's, uh, appropriate and so forth, or the DRB. Um, I, I, I think that we should consider that because otherwise, uh, it's going to be as well, really expensive. But, um, I think the first step is ascertaining exactly what needs to be done. And, uh, you know, the, and prioritizing the needs, uh, you know, of the dozen or so cottages.
Yeah, we also need to look into the contracts still. Um, maybe something that legal can do, look at the contracts and see what we can change or what we didn't have there that is letting them do these changes without having any penalties into it.
Yeah, I, I think that if anyone is going to do any renovation work on the Sea Spray cottages, the, uh, village needs to approve what they're going to do before they do it. None of this, you know, asking for forgiveness later. Um, if, if somebody wants to upgrade a bathroom, that's fine by me, but it has to be upgraded to our standards.
I agree. And we just, I think Beth just put something in the lease. And if they do something they're not supposed to, there's a penalty involved. All right, anything else on this?
I just want, I just want to jump in here. Um, and I agree with every, what everyone seems to say. And Rogue, you know, for years, people have had those cottages before we put them up to auction for a very long time. And there's a couple that are nicer than others, just because the tenants took it upon themselves to, to, to do the up, upgrades. Um, we do need to keep a track on that. So I'm in full support. But the one thing I wanted to bring up was that, you know, these cottages, one reason is that they're so battered down is because there's no heat and there's no insulation through the year round. And, you know, I don't know what the board's thoughts are of, you know, going through them slowly and trying to winterize them, because again, they're getting destroyed by the salt water and the wind and the cold. And the entire cottage just gets wrecked all winter. I mean, everyone knows that when you turn the heat off, you turn the utilities off, it just all goes downhill quick. And so, you know, I, I had an idea of trying to slowly winterize these, making them more year-round, which therefore, if there was a tenant that had a year-round lease, they would keep it up. They would be up kept better. You know, it would, these would stay in better shape and also command a little bit more rent income for the village as well. I mean, it, it's just a shame to put so much money into these cottages and then shut them off all winter. And then the elements just destroy them. So, you know, it, it's, it, it's hard to keep these cottages nice when the heat shut off all winter.
Yeah, I, I, I would certainly be in favor of, uh, looking at, um, HVAC, maybe not so much to keep them habitably hot, but to keep them from, you know, freezing uptight. Uh, and also the, uh, HVAC would go a long way to reducing the humidity, which, you know, I think the humidity is even worse in the summertime. Uh, in terms of the structure and potentials for mold and things like that. But, I mean, that's not something we need to do right away. I think that the first thing we need to do, as Rose and Sandra said, was, you know, define the problem. And then we can work on the answer.
I mean, that's definitely important to get them up to speed where they should be. But I, I like Chris's idea. Maybe we should just start doing one a year and insulating it and make it a year-round possibility where we can.
Yeah. Well, and, and actually, in some cases, it's two units, like for example, one and two are in the same structure. Two and three are the same structure.
Exactly. We keep on having the problem with the roof and the roof is the insulation and then the plumbing. And the plumbing is because it's not year-round. So, I mean, we're causing a lot of these problems by allowing them to, to be shut down all winters. Again, Tiger, I agree with you. This is not something that we're going to do tomorrow. But, uh, I think that as an overall long-term plan, as the mayor suggested, is that I'd be in favor of picking a, a unit or a, um, structure, whether it be one unit or two, and trying to, um, winterize them in, on a, on a basis of that way. I think it would save us money in the long run, and I think we would make the money back in rent.
Yeah, right. Anything that we can make more revenue, I'm, I'm agreeing to. And if we can fix them and get more revenue, we can get our projects done. So, yeah, I'm up for that.
All right. So we're going to leave that with Fred compiling a list of what needs to be done. And then we'll prioritize on what we need to get done. Okay. First. All right.
Are they all occupied? I don't, my last question, I don't know who has the answer to this, but are all units occupied for next season?
I don't have all the leases back yet, but, um, I haven't had anybody say otherwise. Okay.
Terrific. All right, Marcos, you want to just fill us in about the Main Beach improvements?
Yeah, I, I apologize for renovations. It's almost too strong word. It's really improvements. Um, Dell Cullen gave us some great recommendations as to how to trench the exterior in order to put a new skirt around the pavilion so that the animals wouldn't get in, uh, so we can, you know, end that issue. There's some azek fascia that needs to be replaced, uh, and possibly, um, on the front side of the building. It would be nice to have a bid on that, just to see how much, you know, that would cost, uh, to show the board. Um, some interior carpentry, uh, both upstairs and downstairs to be done. And, uh, there's just some camera issues, uh, frankly, whether some work or not, the security cameras. So, you know, I just kind of wanted to alert y'all about that. And I put that in last minute.
Yeah, I think one of the things you face with a, a property like Main Beach and also the Sea Spray cottages is that every time the wind blows, the building gets sandblasted. And that is, uh, hell on shingles, hell on, uh, fascia, hell on paint. And we need to keep on top of this. So, yeah, I, I agree, Marcos.
It's also, you know, we have a new tenant coming in, um, that it's, I felt it was a responsible bid. Uh, I like the way they did that bid where they, they, they took the 15,000 for the first three years. They'd owned their equipment. Um, it puts us at a new plateau and for the end of the five-year lease. Um, and I just, I, I think it's, you know, to make Main Beach number one again, I think, you know, it's an easy thing to do.
Great. Hey, Marcos, um, so at the last, or the last work session, we talked about the paid parking fees. And where we were going to charge, where we're not going to charge. And in the meantime, we've had talks with Sag Harbor. We've received emails, we've received phone calls. And I kind of wanted to put this back on the table and kind of fill everybody in on what Sag Harbor is doing and what I think we should look at and then get everybody's opinion on things. So Sag Harbor is not charging for their parking lots. They're charging for their streets only. Um, I think it would be easier for us to charge in our parking lots and not on our streets. And the difference from what we had said last time was that you were going to get the two hours for free in the parking lot. And then we would start charging. And what we were thinking now is that we would charge immediately when you go in the parking lot. And not charge on our streets. But the fee would be a lot less, say like $2 an hour. So I'm just looking for feedback from everybody. What do you think?
I would suggest that, um, making, I, I can tell you, my wife would be down at Village Hall with a pitchfork if she had to pay $2 to park to buy a $3 stick of butter.
Well, resident, I'm sorry, Tiger, residents would be exempt. Well, resident, I'm sorry, Tiger, residents would be exempt.
So, okay.
The town residents would have to pay when they come to the lots. I I thought that the original proposal uh was way too extensive as far as um on-street and in the parking lots, charging for parking. I had always envisioned really just to start um with the parking lots, Rudishan and Skank, you know, let's see how that goes. You know, you get your first two hours free and the third hour um you could uh pay for extra. So I would lean towards that and I and I believe that Sag Harbor isn't allowed actually to charge in their parking lots because of some restriction, um, you know, that was uh put on it. So they're only allowed actually to charge for street parking. Um, but I I would be, I I'm in favor of just starting with the parking lots and charging there um and and not having it as extensive um to go onto the street and enforcing it to midnight.
I'm I'm in favor of doing the parking lots, not the street, but also in those two parking lots that Rose mentioned, plus the one by the train station. There's a lot of people that leave their cars there for a long period of time. So I would like to see that one in the beginning stages too. So um by the parking, in the parking lot that is right next to the train station, railroad.
railroad avenue.
Yeah, and the fee to be the two dollars instead of the five or 10 that we had spoken about.
So you're, so you're in favor of charging immediately as soon as you come in the lot then?
Yes.
Two bucks, that's kinda what we've been bouncing around. What do you think?
Oh, Tiger?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to the mayor, one thing that I think we have to be careful about is that um and this is not gonna be popular to be mentioned to to people in the village, is that we do have a significant amount of revenue from parking tickets. And I don't think we wanna make it so easy that we lose all our parking ticket revenue. Well, you know, just something to keep in mind.
And and you're right, Tiger, we thought about that. Um, I think enforcement, I think the problem that we had with the um, let's say, the first draft, if you wanna call it, is that we felt that we'd be getting a lot more revenue from enforcement and that's not really what we want. We we kinda want this to be the friendly approach, you know, so I I think it's more, I think Rose and I first discussed this in my office that, you know, if if someone's pulling up to Starbucks or, you know, using the banks or the churches, et cetera, it really, it doesn't hurt the town residents to park on the streets. It really doesn't. I mean, it's, it's that added convenience of using our parking lots and then it's easier for enforcement and it's frankly simpler and it's not gonna anger anybody, I don't think. I mean, yeah, but.
So we would not be charging for on-street parking? Unless unless they click over the time limit.
But it would still be timed, parking.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then they get a eighty-dollar ticket.
Right, we, on the streets, Tiger, we would not allow for additional parking.
Right, no third hour.
No way to pay on the street. You give your one hour for free and then if you don't move, you're gonna get a summons.
Yeah, I think that's good.
But in the parking lot, as soon as you pull in, you're gonna have to log into the app and maybe you get a fifteen-minute grace period and then you start, you pay the two dollars an hour or whatever it is. And we just feel it would make, we'd make a lot more revenue, it would be friendlier. And by giving the two-hour grace period, I don't really know how much money we're gonna make beyond the three, you know, for three and four hours. And really, this money needs to go, you know, for the the project for the sewer system, which is gonna help all of our uh businesses and and our residents as well, so.
And this is May fifteenth to September fifteenth.
Right.
And it would exclude village residents.
What about the third hour for village residents? We had talked about that, third hour free for village residents?
Yes, yep. So then you can pay for the fourth, I guess, if they wanted to.
All right, and this would also be enforcement till midnight?
No, no, we were talking about knocking it off at five o'clock this year. Let's see how it goes.
Cause it currently goes to six, right?
Yeah, but it's not, I mean, the signs say six, but it's really not done after five o'clock. So we were thinking if we, if we shut it off at five, because we also got complaints from restaurant workers that will then have to walk all the way to the long-term lot in the dark at night. And we all know it's safe, but it's still the perception of having to walk in the dark and. So my recommendation would be, we just shut it off at five o'clock, which means really it gets shut shut off at three o'clock. And then people coming to work at the restaurants or working late can move their cars up into the parking lot and not have to um, and not have to worry about it.
Right.
It's kinda like what we're doing right now.
TCOs knock off at five?
Yeah.
Okay. And that walk to the long-term parking lot, I realize, is uphill both ways.
That's true. So, all right, so we'll we'll come up with some legislation. If you think of anything else that you like or you don't like, let me know.
Good.
Uh Marcos, can you talk about the traffic signal?
I think this is Dave Collins, is he?
Dave?
Good morning. So uh we received our annual contract for uh traffic signal maintenance and uh the fees for this year are essentially doubling. Uh, in the past, we've spent uh, uh last year uh calendar year, we spent seven thousand dollars in traffic signal contract maintenance and the year before it was six thousand. Uh, this year, the projected cost is uh eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty. Uh, so I felt with a significant uh increase that uh perhaps we should put this out to competitive bid and see what uh other contractors uh propose.
Absolutely. I agree, Dave.
Yeah, so that's the basis of it. Um, this has been an annual renewal uh without going to bid for a few years uh prior to my coming into to the office. Um, and it expires on January thirty-first, so we may have a a month that we're, we have a lap uh or a lapse in uh um the contract, but I thought it prudent to to get it on the work session and uh not wait to the the regular trustee meeting.
Hey Dave, um, this is Chris, could you just explain what a typical or what average traffic signal maintenance is? Like making sure they work or paint it or what what is it?
Right, well, by biannually, they come out and relamp the uh all the traffic signals for a fixed fee, that's in the contract. Uh, the monthly fee that we pay for the contract is, it's a service contract and basically it says that uh um, they are on call, uh they respond to us uh either from a request from DPW, the traffic authority or the police department uh to respond within four hours and uh fix any outages. Uh, any minor items, uh less than twenty dollars, a fuse, a bulb, uh, you know, a wiring connection. It's part of the contract, anything over twenty dollars is considered a major item and is billed out at uh at their their rate. Any major project, uh say a pole is damaged and the the light has to be reinstalled or a new light installed, that's all uh at-time material um over the contract.
Now Dave, I was just trying to do a quick calculation in my head, we have like six controlled intersections in the village?
The only ones we're really dealing with with this contract is Collins Avenue, Newtown Lane and Cooper and uh Race Lane and Rarod Avenue. These are the three, three lights. Uh, North Main Street is uh uh taken care of under the town and um Main Street, uh Woods Lane and uh Panico are all under state. State, uh those are state lights. And uh Main Main Street, Newtown Lane, they're all state maintained lights. So this really covers only, only three lights for us.
I think we could probably do it a lot cheaper ourselves in terms of relamping. I mean, if it gets into the control boxes and stuff, I guess that might be a different story.
But the relamping cost uh is uh is really insignificant. Um, oh, over the whole cost of the contract, it's uh, um, the relamping was uh the relamping's four hundred and fifty dollars. So really, that's, you know, um, to have the contractor come out and do that and, you know, they do and they inspect the the unit at the same time, it's probably worth, worth them having, having that done. Um, it was just the overall increase, um, you know, more than double that uh just put up a red flag for me. Um, it's been consistent for the last uh three or four years and then all of a sudden now we're, we're, we're doubling the, more than doubling the uh cost of the contract.
Right, so have we had any problem with the control systems that they've had to replace?
No, um, the lights are uh um you know, very low maintenance, uh unless uh, you know, we have a major storm or uh somebody hits the structure. Um, the the uh, the systems that are in them, they're a uh um electronic and semi-mechanical system. Um, you can hear them clicking when you go by them, uh the relays. And uh they're, they're pretty much bulletproof. You know, occasionally a lamp will go out and the village police will will get a call that, you know, uh a lamp in one direction is not lit. The contractor comes out, they they're generally very quick to respond. Um, I believe they have trucks on the road, you know, twenty-four hours a day, so, because they also service other municipalities and uh um, they may even do some of the work for the state, so.
That seems very expensive for me for what they seem to be doing.
Yeah, well, it's it's like having a service contract for your oil burner at your house, you know, you you, you pay for it, you know, hopefully your heat doesn't go out, but when your heat goes out, you have a contractor, you know, Johnny on the spot, it's kind of, you're guaranteeing a uh an emergency.
So why don't we um put this out to bid and uh let's see if anybody comes in cheaper?
Yeah, I agree.
All right, great. All right, can we go Marcos unpaid alarm fines?
Sure, I mean, we've got about just under thirty thousand dollars worth of unpaid alarm fines. Um, and I think what we had proposed at one of the nine AM department head meetings um in early December was to see if we could add this on to the tax bill the following year to make sure that they get paid. And I wanna make sure, I think there's a lot of agreement about it and I just wanna make sure what the board thought about.
Hey Beth, what do you think?
That's the code provides for that to be done.
Okay.
So there's a provision already in the board's code, in the village's code that states that after, I think it's sixty days. I just looked at it this morning, um, that it gets tacked on as a lien and would be paid in your property tax, to be paid in your property taxes.
Have we ever done that before, to your knowledge, Beth?
To my knowledge, no, but I've only been here a year, so.
Right.
We'd have to ask, um, probably, uh, we would probably have to ask Susan Stokowski, cause I think.
Yeah, since, since these uh, when I saw this list, I was flabbergasted. Some of these go back to two thousand ten.
Well, I guess there's the answer.
Yeah, so I think that uh we haven't done it for at least ten years.
Tiger, with a lot of repeat offenders of these.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that realistically, um you know, some neighbors of mine are habitual show-ups on this list. Um, I think that uh, I mean, I I was outraged when I saw this. I mean, I pay my fifty bucks every year. I would think that uh what we should do is, we can add it to the tax bill if we want. Um, but I think we should send them a letter, each one of them, telling them how much they owe and if they don't pay us within thirty days, we will not respond to an alarm and their insurance company will be informed.
And you can't do that.
It does, you can't do that. And the code says that we have to send a certified letter informing them that they are in default of this and then we can, you know, if they haven't paid within sixty days, pursue uh, you know, putting a lien.
There's a provision, um, it's sixty-two dash five E.
Two.
Well.
And that's the provision that provides to allow, it's the notice provision as far as giving them the sixty days and then how how you move forward from there.
Can we, how about late fees?
There, there is no late fee included.
No interest, no late fees, maybe we could add that.
Yeah.
Provision.
I would.
Yeah, late fees would be something and I would like to see.
Yeah. I write my check every year. I guess I'm the only one.
All right, great, so how do we go forward here, Beth?
Um, we would have to.
Follow the code, whatever it says.
The code, yeah, so we would want to um, I mean, if these have already been, a lot of these people will already be passed because the requirement is um you know, it's sixty days from the notice, so assuming they've already gotten the notice, I'd, we'd have to double-check that. Um, we're, I'm sure we're passed, but if we wanna just re-notice everybody just to be a little more um formal about it now, that we can re-notice everybody that's got an outstanding fine and then say that they have sixty days, otherwise this is what's gonna happen, it's gonna become a lien and blah, 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 blah.
Right. Can we inform their insurance company? Because, you know, you have an alarm, you get a reduced rate on your insurance and go back and say.
They still have an alarm.
Yeah, but we can go back and say so-and-so hasn't paid their fees.
They don't, the insurance company doesn't care. Right, I mean, ultimately, the the, we have to respond and they have an alarm, so.
Yeah, so let's just do that, let's just do what the code said.
Okay.
If they don't pay after that, then we'll just put the lien on. Okay, perfect. Um, before we get in, before we close out work session and get into the resolutions, I just wanted Marcos to fill everybody in on, you'll see, there's gonna be a resolution number one, but I just wanted him to tell you about it before we, we move into that.
Um, it's, it's a uh, it's a cyber grant that I found um with Jen Mezziano, our grant writer, and it's perfect. We don't have to match it, it's fifty thousand dollars. And if you've been, um, if you've kinda seen some of the local news up island, there's been a lot of cyber attacks that have been hitting municipalities, school districts and really just stealing money. Um, you know, one point four million, seven hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand, not too long ago. Um, there's fishing scams, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of attacks where our network is is, you know, I don't wanna go into our weaknesses here on, as our, in our network. Beth is smiling. Uh, but, but you know, it's, it's very easy, it's an easy lift to get this grant. We're poised to to kinda get it and I'd love to take advantage of it, frankly, you know.
Sure.
I agree one hundred percent.
Me too.
All right, great, so let's move out of the work session into the resolutions. Ready, June?
Yep.
All you.
Number one, adopt resolution one dash two thousand twenty-one to approve submission of a grant application to the New York State Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
So moved.
Second.
Hold a favor?
Aye.
Fast and carry.
Number two, adopt resolution two dash two thousand twenty-one hereby extending the effective date of resolution number fifty-six dash twenty twenty adopted on August eighteenth, twenty twenty, to remain in effect to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one in the matter of the Volunteer Firefighter Service Award Program Point System when special response rules are in effect during COVID-nineteen pandemic of twenty twenty as per emergency order number two dash forty-four of twenty twenty.
Before we uh vote on this, can I ask why we're only going out to January thirty-one? Is that something statutory or?
I think you can extend it to whatever date you want or keep extending, it's, it's the board's choice.
You know, I mean, I think that um, the uh fire and ambulance are probably not going to be fully immunized for at least probably until the end of February. I mean, we certainly can extend it out to the end of February unless you know, we wanna do it for this month and then we can do it for the next month, I don't really care, but.
I mean, it it doesn't matter, as long as we're within our year, we can go retroactively if we don't, even if we wait till March meeting and see how we're doing, we can always move it, you know, make it retroactive, similar to what we're doing right now.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fast and carry.
Okay, adopt resolution number three dash twenty twenty-one hereby extending the effective date of resolution number fifty-seven dash twenty twenty adopted on August eighteenth of two thousand twenty to remain in effect to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one in the matter of the Volunteer Ambulance Workers Service Award Program Point System when special response rules are in effect during the COVID-nineteen pandemic of twenty twenty as per emergency order number two point forty-four of twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fast and carried.
Number four, adopt Resolution Number 4-2021 to approve the procurement and use of village credit card and adopt a credit card use policy.
Before we vote on this, I thought the village had a credit card before.
Nope.
Never had one?
Not to my knowledge. I know at some point 15 years ago or longer, they adopted a policy against the use of it.
Right.
But that's all I know.
Okay, well, I'm in favor of having a credit card. I would like to ensure that the use of this credit card is restricted to the mayor and village administrator.
Actually, the.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's actually even better than that, Tiger. We're just keeping it for Dominique. It's really just treasure, you know, in 2021, there's so many web services and companies now that only will accept credit cards, really just for her.
Okay.
The treasurer, the treasurer will be the gatekeeper of the card. Anybody who needs to purchase anything that they can't do on a purchase order will have to contact Dominique and she'll be the only one authorized to place the order. So it's a pretty strict policy. So I think it'll, should satisfy everybody's.
And I also noticed that we can pay this off waiver, off warrant. So we can get ahead of the, we don't get.
Interest, yeah, no interest.
Yeah, okay.
And it and it won't circumvent also any of our financial protocols in place.
Okay, fine.
Motion?
Good idea.
And make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fast and carried.
Number five, accept 2021 Ambulance Association Officers as per recent Ambulance Association election. Chief Lisa A. Charred, Assistant Chief Anne Grabowski, Captain Marcia Diaz, Assistant Captain Mary Mott, Lieutenant Olga, oops, Arya, and Second Lieutenant Ian Hoyt.
I just want to say, thanks for all these people for actually stepping up and doing such a great job. It's really becoming such a big job now with the ambulance and the fire. And I just appreciate all these people doing such a great job for us, so.
Especially, especially in this year, Jerry.
Oh, I know, you're not kidding, so.
Yeah.
Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Fast and carried. Thank you again.
Congratulations, Lisa.
Number six, adopt Resolution Number 5-2021 in recognition of Paul F. Rickenback's 28 years of service to the village as mayor. Hereby proclaiming Maidstone Avenue shall bear the honorary name Honorable Paul F. Rickenback Jr. Road.
So I'm very excited about this. So can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fast and carried. So the plan with this would be on Saturday, the 16th. We will, hopefully all of us can attend and we'll go out to Maidstone Avenue on the corner of Gingerbread and we will have a short ceremony there where we'll proclaim that road in his name. So Hugh, hopefully you can attend and.
I'll be there.
Yeah, it's going to be 2 o'clock on the 16th. So anybody who would like to attend, that would be great.
Okay, number seven, accept National Waste Services LLC's bid to provide recycling services at the five village beaches and six locations in the business district as per the December 29 bid specifications at the cost of $606.20 monthly. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this, and this is recycles only, right?
Yeah, exactly. I just like to make a quick comment about this, like, you know, we found out that we actually do not actually recycle. So this is going to go a long way in, you know, helping our environment. So even though we had recycle bins at the beaches, it was all being dumped into one location. So this will correct that problem. We'll actually be able to put recycle bins out that national waste will pick up twice a week. They take it to an off-site location up west and it all gets separated there and recycled correctly. So really excited about this, that we can do our part. So thanks again, everybody. I just want to see, Jody, do we have any public comment?
Yes, there's one caller on the line.
Oh, good, you want to put him through?
Yep, let me unmute them now. Seemed like they just got off the phone as soon as I unmuted them.
All right, you want to wait a couple of minutes and we'll see if they come back? A couple of minutes is a long time, just wait a minute.
Yes.
Can I just use this time, Mr. Mayor, to remind everyone that the Village Hall is closed and non-resident beach stickers will be on sale. We, I would prefer, as as, if we can get as many people to buy them online.
Starting February.
February 1st.
Thank you.
You know, Marcos, it's funny, you know, you give me these little notes to to announce and I don't even, I don't even read them, so. Just step in anytime. So anybody, Jody?
Nope, nobody's called back.
All right, so let's close our meeting. Can I get a motion? And before we do that, I just want to announce we're going to be going into executive session to speak about real estate and personnel. If there's anything we need to do after that, we'll notify the public, then we'll go back into session. But otherwise, we're going to close the meeting. Motion.
Second.
All right, meeting is closed. Thank you, everybody. See you in executive session.